Before I ask my other colleagues to introduce themselves, can I ask Democratic Services just to go through the house rules please?
Yes, thank you Chair. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from the staff and stewards. The assembly point is Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode as to not disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be published to view later through the council website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and re-progress this meeting. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recordings of the proceedings is permitted, however, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend the permission, for example if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or has been undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participating in the meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I will now ask the colleagues to introduce themselves, just to say that when you speak, please use the mic, but do turn it off once you finish speaking please. So, my colleague on the right?
Councillor Peter Gilbert, representing Ecosole Wood.
Hello, I'm Mark Wadigat, councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don. Thank you.
Good morning everyone, Samantha Bond, legal adviser to the Subcommittee.
Morning, Shimla Finch. Sorry, I'm Shimla Finch, licensing officer.
JBL Democratic Services Officer.
Asha Wiggers, the proposer of the licence.
I'm Ezra Wiggers, also a proposer.
Mark, head of security at Sheffield United Football Club.
Good morning, Maya Salmon Lord, I'm a local resident and a committee treasurer for the Shoreham Street Tenants and Residents Association.
Okay, thank you. I'll just ask our Solicitor Committee to just go through the procedure for this morning, please Sam.
It's a surprise to me all the time. Has everyone got a copy of the papers or had some through? Yeah, we've got a couple of spares if you need any. So the procedure's right at the back on page 54. So the licensing officer who Shimla this morning will introduce the report. If there are any questions concerning the report, you can raise them then, so if there's anything missing, anything that's changed, just so we can get that all dated for the record. There are no outstanding representations from any responsible authorities, conditions have already been agreed with South Yorkshire Police during the consultation period. So I think if we just start with interested parties, we can start from this end of the table and work our way down, basically just to detail your representations as set out in the report and just to expand on those with anything else you think might be relevant for the committee to hear and make a decision on. Members can ask you questions and with the leave of the Chair, the applicant can also ask you questions as well. We'll then turn to the applicant to detail the application, provide clarification on the application and respond to representations made, both all the ones written in the report and any extra that are raised at the hearing today. And again, members will probably have some questions and with the leave of the Chair, the interested parties could ask you questions as well. You'll be given the final say, just an opportunity to sum up the application before we take the options from Shimla, which are already detailed in the report. We'll then go into private session so members can take legal advice and consider the application, so you are welcome to wait around and we can give you that decision a little bit later on this morning, this afternoon, depending how we go. The decision of the Licensing Committee will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and regulations made their run there. At any time during the hearing, members can request legal advice, so we can do it in open session as we are now, or private where we'll just ask you guys to nip next door, we'll have a chat and then invite you back in and let you know what's been discussed or decided if need be. And as we've already covered, the hearing is public, live webcast and recorded this morning, so the little cameras dotted around the room, which is also why we use the mic so that the camera can pick up on the sound and the video for people that are watching as well. And that should be everything, I think. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you. Right, so over to the licensing officer for the report please.
Thank you Chair. This report is to consider an application for the grant of a premises licence under Licensing Act, which was received on the 3rd of September. A copy of the documents, including plans, are attached at Appendix A of the report. The application is for a mobile food truck located outside Sheffield United Football Club to sell alcohol for consumption off the premises alongside their food trade during match days. The applicant currently has football, street trading consent to sell food and drink at First Team home fixtures, friendlies and internationals for four hours prior, during and up to one hour after each fixture. The application has been referred to the Licensing Subcommittee due to unresolved representations from Award Councillor, Sheffield United Football Club and three local residents. These are attached at Appendix B and there's been written responses by the applicant which is attached. During the consultation period, the applicant has agreed conditions with South Yorkshire Police, these are Appendix C, with additional proposed conditions from the applicant. All parties have been invited to attend this hearing and it's recommended that members consider the representations made and take such steps which are considered appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives.
Okay, thank you. Everybody okay with that? Any questions on the report? Fine, thank you. Okay, so we will start with the interested parties then, in terms of presentations. If you want to make your presentation then, please, if you want to just elaborate on what you've already said.
Okay, good morning everybody, thank you. I'm a local resident and I live around the corner from the burger van that comes on match days. We already have a significant problem with litter around the area due to the mobile food trucks that are around the matches. It isn't managed already and right now, if I could take a photograph of the car park next to my house, which is on the next corner, you'd see it's full of litter already. There's also the issue around toilets. People do tend to use the car park as a public toilet and there doesn't seem to be any proposal in the applicant's application that to manage where people are going to use the bathroom. People drinking in the streets, it does happen, but it doesn't happen to the extent that it will if this licence is granted. It does say that the applicant has asked customs, will ask customs to take purchases away from the vicinity, however, the only places away from the vicinity are our streets, which are all residential streets. Sheffield United ground is surrounded on three sides by houses and our local community is very concerned about people wandering off with open cups of alcohol to drink in the local streets. It's also going to mean that people are going to start to be congregating in the streets and if you can imagine, I don't know if any of you councillors have ever attended a Sheffield United game, it's like Bedlam already with huge numbers of people, thousands of people walking through the streets. If we've now got groups of people hanging around, blocking those streets, drinking alcohol, I can see that that's going to be a real problem for public nuisance, keeping people safe and things like that, at least at the moment they're kind of walking through. There's a much higher risk of drunken behaviour, abuse, antisocial behaviour and noise for the local residents. This is going to restrict people who are trying to enjoy their homes and go about their daily business in the community. Where will the plastic cups that the alcohol's being served in end up? At the moment, the food van provides food in compostable packaging, plastic cups are not compostable and therefore will remain on our streets until they've been moved, probably by the council if at all. Also, I'm concerned at the precedent that this sets, that if this licence is granted, that what is to stop the other food trucks from around the ground also applying for premises licences and we'll have a situation where everybody's drinking in the street, whereas currently, they go to the bars and pubs which are contained with licensed door staff away from the residential area. Sheffield United have a lot of pubs that cater to mainly home fans, but they're kind of away from where people live. The streets are close to cars but still used by bikes, pedestrians, residents walking around and so this is only going to cause people to congregate in the shut-off roads, which will have to be managed somehow and I'm assuming it's going to end up falling to Sheffield United to manage that. Another concern that I've got, one of the matches every other week or so through football season is in an evening, on a Tuesday evening and being able to serve alcohol four hours previous to the match means that alcohol will be served on the street when children are on their way home from school. And certainly my children went to King Eglot School, that's the local catchment, which means they need to get a bus to the bottom of London Road and walk through John Street, which is where the burger van will be situated and is situated. And so if you've got a congregation of people drinking and a number of schoolchildren having to walk through that on their way home from school, that's concerning to me and to other residents for the safety of their children. Families attending the football match will have to walk through the street bar because there isn't anywhere for people to sit, there isn't anywhere for people to go, so they have no choice but to stand and drink on the street. And so they will, it will have to create these pockets of people congregating, drinking alcohol and families are going to have to walk through that to get to and from the stadium, as well as local families going about their business. Another point is that it's already illegal to drink in the city centre and the boundary is literally less than 500 metres away from where this proposed site is because we're very close to the city centre. We already deal with a lot of antisocial behaviour due to that because the boundary for the non-drinking area is two streets away. It's not, it's not far at all. And I just wanted to elaborate that the community already deals with a lot of problems due to this antisocial behaviour from football matches. Litter, abuse, criminal damage, all regular things through football season for residents. I think that this will only increase by encouraging people to drink away from the pubs and into the streets to drink. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for that. We may have some questions, I'll just open it to any questions if they have any. Councillor Gilbert, any question?
Not at this time Chair.
Okay, councillor Whitaker.
Just, you're not particularly bothered by the drinking that goes on in the pubs? There are quite a few pubs round there, presumably they're still, they're still walking up and down the streets afterwards going to the match.
The pubs tend all are kind of away from the residential area that I live in anyway. They're on the far side of the football stadium. The area behind the football stadium where Shoreham Street and all of the residential area that is local to me, there aren't any, there aren't any pubs. And so they tend to go to the non-residential side and drink in, there's probably three pubs along Bramall Lane where there's less housing, whereas this burger van is right in the middle of where all the residents live.
Thank you, Sam.
I was just wondering if there's already an ongoing dialogue with the club in terms of issues that you face when matches are on, is there sort of with the residents group? Do you discuss those with the club directly or is it just something that they manage and you suffer with essentially?
I have worked as the Community Development Manager for St Mary's Bramall Lane for the last eight and a half years and we have in the past had a very good relationship with Sheffield United. Due to staff changes, we don't have that dialogue currently, but I'm hopeful that that will be opened again. We, at St Mary's, provided some litter picking services and stuff in the past, but we don't currently do that.
Okay, thank you. No more questions on this side of the thing. Applicants, you will get a full opportunity afterwards obviously to elaborate on your application, but at this stage if you want to ask any questions or you're just cross-examining the representatives, then you're welcome to do so. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you. Right, we'll move on to the next interest party, Mark.
Thank you Chair. I would reiterate the comments of the lady here. Just to add some clarity to what she said, the three pubs that are closest to the ground are actually on Bramall Lane, which for the vast majority outside the ground is actually commercial. So there's the railway inn at the very top of Bramall Lane. Further down, you've got the Cricketers on the corner of John Street, the opposite corner to where the food truck is and at the bottom of Bramall Lane you have Penenka. Any other licensed premises are a number of streets away, probably the closest one at that point then is the Sheaf which is further along Bramall Lane. So there is no other pub licensed premises in that vicinity. The only other place where you can buy alcoholic drinks is a supermarket on the corner of Shoreham Street, which is a small, there's a small roundabout at that location which is directly opposite where the food truck is situated. My comments are very similar about the location of the food truck. It benefits from the road closures, which is paid for and placed on by the football club. I am concerned that there will be disorder in that location and also that the stewards and SAA staff that are outside the turnstiles will have to intervene. And I've put in there one example which was against Middlesbrough where somebody from Middlesbrough actually tried buying something at the burger joint and was, caused some problems with, or that in itself caused problems with Sheffield United fans and they ended up fighting not directly outside the burger truck but in very close proximity. That was broken up by stewards and the police also were involved in that. So it's about the increase in potential for disorder that I'm concerned and the fact that club staff who are not there to, if you like, police other commercial enterprises would have to intervene in a moral or ethical standpoint or from a moral or ethical standpoint. Ladies also mentioned children. We have the family hub on that side of the road, there's no alcohol served in there so if somebody wants to come to the game and doesn't want to be involved in drinking alcohol, they're welcomed into the family hub, but obviously now some of those people would have to work past, walk past the burger joint. And I suppose lastly is the lack of toilet facilities, the waste, I wasn't aware of the waste that was outside there anyway and certainly that end or both ends of John Street are burger vans. Nobody's allowed to exit with drinks or drinks containers. I'm not saying they don't exit with them, but we do try and prevent that leaving the stadium in a similar way we would prevent people entering. So it does mean that if somebody is entering the stadium and they buy something from the truck, they will be asked to remain outside until that is drunk. And may at that point be refused admission because as you probably know, it is an offence to enter the ground whilst drunk. Apart from that, the only concern I have is the very proximity of the truck and I monitored that on Saturday at our latest game, so since this application was made or since I became aware of the application, there's been no games apart from this weekend. Apart from being very close to the turnstile, it's also very close, in fact closer, to one of the main exits from the Kop End of the ground and I would be concerned in the event of an evacuation, if there is a crowd outside there, whether there will be sufficient space to get the crowd out in time. That wasn't mentioned on here because I wasn't aware of its direct location until Saturday when I've taken more interest in it because of this hearing.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that Mark. We'll open to questions. Just a couple of myself first Mark, if you don't mind. Just for my information for clarity, the pubs that you mentioned where people may go and drink, say before a match or after, that drinking in there is contained within the pubs, it's not consumed outside of the pubs, is that correct?
Yes, as far as I'm aware, their licence conditions prevent them allowing people outside of the pub on the street to drink. They've got quite extended conditions because of proximity. So the Cricketers for example can't open its front door, it's got to allow people in by the side door. I know that the licensing authorities are regularly in touch with the railway inn at the top of Bramall Lane around her conditions and enforce them quite rigidly. But yes, nobody that I've seen leaves those premises with a glass or any other container.
Okay, and the other outlets, a number of outlets, I think it's the two shops and one supermarket, how does that work in terms of their sale of alcohol and where is that normally or generally consumed?
I don't know what their sales are like, thinking about what I said, there are two supermarkets, there's one at the junction of Cherry Street and Bramall Lane and one that I mentioned earlier at the bottom of Shoreham Street. If they were to sell any alcohol, it wouldn't be allowed into the ground for the reason I said earlier. I've never come across anybody trying to enter the ground or stood on the street corner or anything like that drinking alcohol. Alcohol is freely available, not freely, it is available in the stadium, it's only a short walk from wherever they've been, whether that be home, the railway station or anything like that, or the licensed premises nearby, they can come into the ground. Not unlike other places, the cost of alcohol in the stadium is linked, if you like, to the cost of alcohol outside, so it's not, it's not as if we put a great markup on it, but I'm not in control of that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Whitaker.
Actually, you've just answered my question. I've never been to a football match and I didn't know whether you sold alcohol inside the stadium, but you've just answered that. Thank you very much.
Councillor Gilbert. Thank you Chair. On the last point you made about evacuation, are you saying that the burger van selling food, not a problem, but if it was selling alcohol as well, that would become a concern to you in regards to evacuation?
Yes, more of a concern. I am concerned about the proximity of the burger van anyway, but I know that's done through the street trader's licence, it's different committee or hearing or procedure. But it is directly opposite one of the main exits from the Kop. The Kop holds about 11,000 spectators and there are three exits very close together. Certainly it's directly opposite one, not quite directly opposite the second one, but obviously if there was a group of people outside there drinking, because that's where they'd have to reasonably drink, I know it's an off licence that they're looking for, but that's where they would reasonably drink and they put some tables outside for that, presumably it's that purpose, and to allow people to eat on a table, small table. But yes, it does concern me, I've been in touch with the SAG Chair about that in the last couple of days, having had this drawn to my attention. So there are ongoing questions about its location directly outside the exits.
Thank you, okay, Sam.
Thank you, I was also going to ask that question. Have you had any complaints about the van in its existence? I think it's been there for quite a few years now, have there been any problems?
I've not had any complaints, I've been there now for a couple of years. Its actual location is not directly outside any residential premises, there's a shop on the corner and it's outside the back part of that shop and its yard. I think the vehicle that you used to tow it might be just outside a house, but there are resident parking bays there, that's where it's parked.
Yeah, I just heard that wrong. Someone knocking on the door. And did you say there were tables and chairs there currently?
I don't think there are any chairs, there's, the last, there were a couple of like oil drums aren't there with a tabletop on? Was that not yours? I've seen those.
Not that.
I don't know whether there's another person that runs it or whatever. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is that someone else? Local resident, yeah, okay, I'm happy for you to come and make your presentation. We're already in process, so just give me one second please, we'll finish this current. Any more questions for Mark, anyone? No? Applicants, do you have any questions?
Yes, we do. During the matches, do you limit any alcohol intake in the bars on the ground?
We operate a challenge 25. I, I'm not, I've got nothing to do with, the catering is all outsourced, they're all licensed and the DPS is from that company, so I don't know the full ins and outs of what their operational role is, but I know they operate challenge 25, I know there are kiosks in the ground that do not serve alcohol at all, there's an area off the stadium where there is no alcohol permitted at all and obviously within the seated area, there's no alcohol permitted.
Do you control the flow of children and families through the bars in, on the ground? And do you know if the pubs control any of the alcohol intake or whether they control the level of inebriation of clients that are completely inebriated, whether they allow them to leave the bars and pubs onto the streets on Bramall Lane?
It's not the way to say, I have no control or anything over the pubs in that area.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right, well, is it Mr Dilafah? We're just in time because the current, the first two representatives have just finished their presentation, so I'll hand over to you to just make your presentation then.
Yeah, I'm one of the people who do litter picking on Lansing Road and we're very concerned that with these plastic cups becoming available, they're going to end up on our street as do a lot of other items and so, yeah, we're very concerned about that. We already see stuff from McDonald's which is half a mile away ending up on our street and it being right adjacent to where we are, we're concerned about that. We're also concerned about, I'm 79 years old, I'm concerned about people getting liquored up and then trying to get in the fights or something and, yeah, it's already... up and then trying to get in the fights or something, and yeah, it's already a bit of a rowdy crowd when they come out of the stadium, so that concerns me too. So I think that that winds up what I'm going to say.
Okay, thank you. We may have some questions. Councilor.
Do you think the fact that there are pubs out near, not too far away, where people can go and beer is sold inside the ground, do you think considering that they have a two-drink policy in this van, that that is going to make a massive material difference to drunkenness on the street?
Well, if they're already drinking in the stadium, or already drinking in pubs, and then they can come out and have more on the street, I think that causes a problem, a potential problem.
Can I just say something on that point?
Just one second, please.
Sorry. I just wanted to say that if you can imagine a crowd of 11,000 people or more going, passing through Bramall Lane, I would like to know how it would be at all possible to police the two-drink limit. I can't see how even the best trained staff in the world could recognise hundreds and hundreds of people to be able to restrict drinking to two drinks.
Thank you. Any questions? Applicants, any question of the last resident?
Can I answer that question?
No, if you can ask a question. No, okay. You can come back to answer anything once your turn to make your presentation. Okay, well, that's fine then, all the residents and interested parties have made their presentations, we've finished with the question and the session, and now it's over to yourselves to detail your application and answer anything that you picked up in the presentations now. That's fine, your time.
Would you like us to state our case?
Just elaborate on your application and anything else you want to say in addition to your statement in the application.
Yeah.
And answer anything that you picked up on the presentations.
Thank you. Yes, so we have been working at the Bramall Lane stand, the van has been there for about 40 years, I have personally been working there about seven or eight years. Yeah, and we have a really good relationship with the fans, and we have a really good relationship with local community members, and we really enjoy being part of the community. One of the things that we've observed over the last few years is that there will be fans who will sort of migrate around the ground to travel to places where they can buy alcohol, and then they will take that alcohol back around the ground to their door or near their home, or whichever direction they're meeting friends in. And we have been made aware of a lot of foot traffic and issues that that causes, and particularly when they're travelling round to the away side of the ground and home fans, and there's a lot of clashes on Bramall Lane between home and away fans. And yeah, so that was something that we observed, and our customer base and local residents, we were kind of talking to them and going, you know, well, would it be easier if we sold alcohol? And there was generally a support for that, and we found that. So we are submitting this application to sort of help the general safety of the community during this time, because we believe that it will reduce foot traffic, and it will enable people to get their meal and a drink rather than going and drinking without a meal on the streets near away fans, where there are issues, and in pubs where home and away fans drink together. So that's our context for this, if that's helpful. Yes, to address, yeah, so we've worked closely with the police, SADUH police, and any relevant licensing committee, and we've worked with those people, I've got a really good relationship with all the people that, well, I believe I've got a good relationship with all the relevant authorities. And yeah, we've come up with this licence with its relevant conditions, pardon me. Yes, so we've devised this licence with its conditions, because we believe that the conditions accurately satisfy the concerns, and as local residents, we share those concerns fully, you know, we share the concerns about fans causing problems on match days, and we really, I take it as a personal responsibility, as well as a community responsibility, to do everything that we can to make it a really fun, family-friendly environment. And yeah, it's something that concerns me greatly, and I love our city and the community. So yeah, we've worked and we've devised the licence, I believe that the conditions on the licence meet the requirements of the Licensing Act, and that they meet the requirements of our personal and moral duty to look after and to care for people well. If I might address some points that the people here have made. We try our best every match to do litter picking down the streets and around our area. One of the changes I've implemented as manager is removing all non-compostable materials from the burger van, so that if somebody takes litter and doesn't use our waste recycling and doesn't use our sort of waste systems, that it is compostable and it doesn't stay around, because it is a big concern to me, and I care about the environment. Yeah, and that was one of the first changes that I implemented. So I believe that we can definitely look at getting some compostable paper cups on the van, if the plastic is a concern, that is something I'd be really willing to look at. And yes, we will provide alcohol, sorry, we'll provide waste facilities, and we do provide waste and facilities, and we will increase that according to how much we sell. And I already have, we have a team that goes around with bags, picking up off the street and going up to customers and saying, can I take that from you? So we will increase that proportionate to how much food and drink that we will sell. I, sorry, let me read my notes. Yeah, we really do take the inebriation point really seriously, and I think one of the concerns that we've observed as well is that we see no facilities near us that have put any limit on the amount of alcohol that you can buy or consume, including when there was an off licence on both corners of the John Street roundabout, I don't know if you remember that, but there was an off licence at some point on both corners, and neither of them, I believe, had any limit on the amount of drinks you can have. And one thing that would happen would be that customers would go into the shop, and they would buy cans or bottles, and then they would smash the bottles on the floor, and then there would be glass there, which I believe poses a serious risk. And so one of the things that we were looking at is how can we, with our customer base who come already to buy food, provide them with a safer alternative that requires less travelling across roads and through neighbourhoods to just keep their food and drink consumption in safe containers and near their entrance to the ground?
And at safe levels, because the whole idea is that they're eating, they're buying a drink with food, they can only buy a drink with food. So if you imagine, yeah, so that's fundamental, that makes a fundamental difference, because the consumption of alcohol without food has a much more impact, and yeah, and so the abuse of alcohol is less possible if you're constantly buying food as well. And that also enables us to know whether someone's trying to drink to excess, because they would have to buy food every time. So, yeah.
Yeah, so we will, yeah, enforce that two-drink policy and the two-drink limit, and we will enforce the buying it with a meal. We have a really good relationship with our customer base, and we know a lot of the fans really well. And so we sort of have a really good relationship with them, and we'll be able to tell when if they are trying to buy more than they should, and we will just say, no, sorry. We know a lot of them by name as well, which is really helpful, and there's only a limit to how many people we can serve. So we will monitor that with the people that we know in our regular customer base, and if there's people that we don't know, that we suspect are coming around again to try and subvert the system, we will just turn them away and say, no, sorry. Which we do that anyway, if people are trying, you know, use fake notes, and they come, and then they try and come again, we're like, no, sorry, won't do that. Yes, one of the conditions is that we will use trained door staff on an ad hoc basis, as and when the risk assessment requires that we would do that, because we really believe in keeping people safe and looking after my team as well as local residents. Yes, I believe our concern about the management of foot traffic of people around the ground also comes into the comment about residents' bikes. And yeah.
I think one of the things that we are very aware of is the congregating of people, of the fans, around the ground, around our burger van, and around the streets, we're aware of it, it impacts our business every time we're trading. And we work as part with the licensing for the food, we submit it to the police and the fire and the emergency services to ensure that our trading doesn't impact any emergency situations. One of the key issues with people gathering is they're gathering while they're waiting to go into the ground, because they bring, if they either bring their own drinks, they buy drinks from us, or they buy drinks from the off licence, or from the shop outside, immediately outside our, where our van is. And they know that they can't come in with those drinks until they go into the ground, so they're congregating, waiting to consume the food, the drinks, the alcohol they've brought with them, and that's before they go in. One of the patterns of which we're, you know, we observe every match, is that congregating only happens before the match. Once the ground is full, the streets are empty. So to argue that having people congregating outside the match in an emergency, well, it's because they're not in the ground yet, does that make sense? So I think that the, limiting the alcohol consumption from our point of view, because we're not looking to open a bar, we're not putting tables and chairs out, we're simply offering people who already are having an alcoholic drink, we're offering to sell it to them while they're eating, rather than having to consume alcohol, then come get some food, then go in the ground.
Yeah, and within a safer space, that we've observed other places just don't have the same standards of safety, which is a concern to us. And yeah, one of the issues is the congregation of people trying to get through the turnstiles, and they're just not getting through quick enough, and that is the source of a lot of the congregation on the streets, which is also a concern to us. But we have never had issues with people congregating around the van. We get through our queue very quickly, and we make sure that people are queuing safely, and if there is a long queue, we get more team on so that we can get through people quickly and safely as possible. Yes. I would like to just comment, yeah, I'd like to comment about the comment on the pubs on the Bramall Lane side, they're also very near residence on, between London Road and Bramall Lane, and we know a few of those residents who have expressed concern with people travelling round and meandering around the pubs, you know, because they have to go round to these places. And so we do believe that that will, we will do everything that we can to prevent that issue. We, to the comment about the incident with the Middlesbrough match last year, I believe, we, I was there, I remember it, and the woman came out of the football ground, completely inebriated, unable to stand, because I don't believe they put any limits on the amount of alcohol consumed in the football ground, and I believe she was in the family stand, the bar in the family stand, which is near our van. So she came out to our van because they had expelled her from the ground and didn't offer her any help or support, and she was lost, and she couldn't dial her phone number, she didn't have to use her phone, so we sat with her, one of our trained first aiders, talked to her, when she fell over, we nursed the wound, and yeah, I think it's incidents like that that are a real concern to us, that we would like to be able to have our own policy in place, so that we can manage the situation, we can control the levels of alcohol, and have trained staff that know how to deal with alcohol-related incidents, because the consumption is happening under our safeguarding umbrella, if that makes sense. And we had to repeatedly call the police and the fire and the ambulance, and the ground wouldn't intervene at all, and so we had to ask one of the door stewards to, out of moral duty, come out to help, because we didn't have any of the provision to do so. And that was a real wake-up call for us. Yeah, I think that we've worked with the police over the location of the van, and the location of the van is deemed to be completely safe when there's an evacuation of the ground, that has been fully taken into account, and so I believe that we are in no risk of impeding an evacuation from the ground from our side of things, and we will continue to work with the police to uphold the highest standards of safety. We, yeah, we don't put any tables out or chairs anyway, that's not our, that's not, the shop opposite has done that, and I'm not sure whether they're allowed to do that or not, but we have never put any tables or chairs out, or anything that blocks pavement use.
We put one table out for condiments for our customers, but that's off the, that's virtually, it looks like it's attached to the trailer that we use, it's not on the pavement, it's out of walking area.
We don't use tables for the consumption of food.
Or alcohol.
Thanks for that. Yes, and yeah, really interested in the idea of paper cups, would be interested in looking at that. I believe that, just on the comment about drinking in the ground and coming out of the ground to drink, I believe that Sheffield United don't let people leave the ground and then come back in. And in the situation where we are serving customers that have been in the ground, we will use the highest levels of turn people away if they show any signs of inebriation, if they show any signs of excess drinking or unsafe drinking, we will turn those customers away.
I think fundamentally, we're not looking to open a portable bar, we're looking to serve existing customers who are already consuming alcohol directly from us as a package, it's not a, we're not looking to create a high-volume alcohol outlet, but because of licensing, this is how we've applied, this is the licence we've applied for, if we could apply for a licence that says otherwise, we would have done.
A more tailored licence.
A more tailored licence to what we, how we offer.
Smaller volumes, but the application, I believe, is standard, and so we've had, that's the issue with the hours of trading being from 10am to 11pm, is because the licence can't take into account, I don't believe, can take into account varying hours and smaller hours at varying times of the day.
Yeah, we trade at limited times under our licensing for the trailer, and we won't change that to serve alcohol. We wouldn't only be serving alcohol when we're serving food, and we serve food in limited time slots, but that spans, but for licensing, alcohol licence purposes, it spans a longer time.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yes. I believe that our responses to the objectors speak for themselves, and we really tried hard to recognise all of those issues and do everything that we can to address them. Yeah, and I would be really happy to work with people to find solutions to any outstanding issues. Thank you very much, Chair.
Okay, thank you for that, very detailed.
Okay, thank you for that. Very detailed elaboration on your application. So we are now going to open to questions.
Yes, thank you for a good presentation. I'm interested in this food with drink. I mean, I've, although I don't go to football matches, I've driven past grounds and seen hordes of people moving around. So I'm not quite sure how this food and drink works. So someone comes back, back to you for a second pint and you say, are you having some food? Oh, I ate that, you know, I mean, how does that work? And moving on, someone comes up to you, loads of people come in groups and says, it's my turn for the round of drinks, I'll have six pints, the rest can get their own food, you know. How do you, is your, are your staff going to be trained enough to unpick these slightly more complex things? Or are you saying every single pint that someone buys, they have to have a burger with it or something, you know? Don't, can you just unpick that for me? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, councillor. We will sell alcohol and food together at one point of sale to one customer at a time. And if a customer is buying on behalf of, say, him and his wife or, you know, two friends, whatever, we will seriously examine whether there is anything going on. But we will only sell to one person with one meal. And we'll need to, we'll need to have, for example, if two people were coming together but paying on one card, we'll need to see both people with both meals, both IDs, and to sell them two pints, if that makes sense. And if there's any sort of, oh, my mates are over there, no. We have to see and speak to the people directly and it's only at the point of sale. So it can't be for meals that have been previously bought or, or we're gonna get a burger in a minute. It will be one transaction, one customer at a time.
That's it. Councillor.
You said about taking care under your umbrella and I appreciate that sentiment. And also, you know, what you've said about wanting to look after the local area. However, obviously, although you may wish to take care of these people under your umbrella, they are also going to other bars, the stadium, shops. So as a result, it's very, very hard for you. In fact, I think you're putting too much pressure on yourselves to take care of the, you know, the crowd as a whole. Because the crowd as a whole will move in and out of your umbrella. How do you feel about that?
Thank you, that's a very good point. I think it is an area of concern for us because we see lower levels of care inside the ground and in other establishments. We don't see the same sort of concern for people's well-being. And that was really highlighted during the incident with the Middlesbrough game with the woman who came out inebriated. And thankfully, those are rare, but we, that was a real standout moment to me of, oh, people aren't being looked after well. And so I think we, it's very difficult to manage people who are moving between different residents, different businesses, different safeguarding umbrellas, if that makes sense. I think we would like to look after the, the people that we are serving so that they don't go elsewhere. Say, walking around the ground to go to a pub, which offers a lower level of care. When they would come to us for a burger anyway and we'll say, don't walk around the ground, don't walk to the away fans, don't go into an away pub. We'll serve you a drink and you can stay near your door, near your entrance. And we'll prevent any foot traffic going around the ground, we'll prevent any clashes with other fans, we'll prevent any unnecessary spillages, droppages, because it will be within our, does that make sense?
Yeah. I think one of the things that, when you, when you're on, on the ground during a football match is that the people congregate in the areas where they enter and exit the ground. And so, and we, so we have a real understanding of our clients. That's why there are many burger vans around the site to serve the different access points to the ground. And so actually, that we, and we observe that our customers who hang around our burger van while they're eating, before they go and into the football ground. And so I think the, the reason we, we're actually trying to make the envelope, the, the umbrella of, of our responsibility. We recognise that we, if we can keep people in one place to eat and have a drink before they go into the ground, that's gonna cause, that, that is gonna cause less movement around the site. But we, yeah, we do know our, our customers and our customers know us. And it's, and it's in conversation with them that we know how busy it is, how long they've had to wait, where they've come from, whether they live nearby, whether they've come out of town. So, so we're not just serving food to anybody, that actually it's a community. The, the, the ground is a bunch of communities and we, there's a community that comes to Stonies. And we can tell you many specific stories of specific customers that come every time with specific requests. So we're not, it's not random interactions that we're dealing with. And equally, with the control of alcohol and who's had what, we, we know the, we know the people that come to us. So yes, there's always new, potential new customers, but we have a really strong base of customers and that's really who we're aiming at, even though we will serve other people. But that gives us a rhythm and a, a systems in place that are easily manageable.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sam.
Thank you. You said you were looking to risk assess door staff on certain occasions. When would you sort of put that in place?
That's a great question. So one of the conditions on the licence is that we will have for high-risk matches, say, I can't think, a derby, a Steel City Derby or a match where there's expected to be a high level of conflict between clubs that are very close in the table, that we will assess the risk on a case-by-case basis as to whether we feel that door staff will need to be employed for that one-off situation. And yeah, we stand by that because we think it's a very safe policy and it to be assessed on a case-by-case basis. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it does. Thank you. I was just wondering, because obviously you've applied for off-sales. So typically, if we think of off-sales with, say, a shop or a supermarket, people are going in, they're buying like the cans, the bottle of wine, whatever. And they're going away typically to their home or somewhere else. Obviously, it's a little bit of a different situation. So is it envisaged that they will stay with the open containers of alcohol in the vicinity of your premises? Or that they'll move about with those? Obviously, I know they can't go into the ground, but just trying to work out how it works in practice.
Yes, a great point. We, we are serving customers who are going into the football ground. And so all of the people who are coming to us are generally headed towards the ground. And people will come, yeah, an hour and a half before the match just to sort of meet up with their friends or they come after work and, you know, they'll get a burger and they'll, you know, spend money in the local community and whatever. And so we are, you know, like our earlier point, it, it is an off-licence because we're a mobile food unit and similar to how the shop is an off-licence, but everybody's heading towards the Sheffield United ground. And so there's a, an expectation that people are headed towards the ground. And so what we are trying to do is ensure that we can keep people safe within the area of the entrances that are near us. And in our experience, all of our customers come from the, the entrances that are nearer the van, because that's why they come near us. And so we're trying to stop that cross of people walking around and, and with drinks and just keep people in the area that they're intended to come to, that they would stay anyway unless they had to walk to a local pub to get a drink. Does it, yeah. Go on then.
I just wanna say the container question. One of the things that we are aware of, because there's a, there's a council bin near our burger van, is that at the end of a match, there are bags and bags of cans and bottles strewn. Now, we take between five and 10 refuse bags away and we recycle what we can and we dispose of what, what we can't. But I don't, I, I don't see any other provision for waste removal other than what we do. And, and that's, that's our responsibility. It's not, it's not, you know, it's a duty as a local trader. And we're from Sheffield and, and it's our responsibility to the community and it saddens me to hear that we don't catch all of it. But that's, our goal is to reduce as much as we can.
That's much appreciated because a lot of traders and applicants don't really give much thought to that. So I can certainly see that you've put the thought in with that. Thank you. Probably on a boring, practical note, if you've got somebody eating food and then alcohol in one hand, it's a little bit tricky to sort of do. Is there a plan for like tables, chairs or?
That's a good question. Currently, our clients drink by non-alcoholic drinks and food at the same time. And they seem to manage that in the same way.
Got a system.
In fact, it's probably harder when they buy a bottle or a can because they have to undo the top, which requires two hands. Where a cup is already open so it can hold food in one hand and actually a cup in the other hand.
And then one of our concerns is that we see people travelling to a local off-licence or a local pub and bringing back a glass bottle and standing with a glass bottle in the street and then, you know, they nudge into someone, the glass bottle falls on the floor and smashes. And, you know, that, that's obviously, we can see the damage and the risk, not only to the local community, but if there's children with them or something like that. And so we are wanting to keep that just localised so there's less movement and less, I mean, you've heard us say this before. Does that, yeah, is that sufficient?
Yeah, yeah, great. Thank you. So obviously, you've got four, four hours before under your street trading licence and an hour after match time. I assume you're still there during the match as well, so at half-time, people can come out or?
So under the terms of the, the, the street trader licence, sorry.
Too many licences.
Oh, no. So under the terms of the street trader licence, we're only allowed to serve before and after. And I believe that the ground doesn't let people out and then back in.
We don't, we don't serve any fans unless they've left the ground and gone home. So during the match, there's very little.
Yeah, custom.
Very little custom.
We, we use that time to litter pick, clean down, you know, and, yeah, prep any other food for the, the hour afterwards, if that makes sense. So, yeah.
Thank you. And I think finally, you've submitted the plan to the sort of fridge for alcohol. Is it, is it just beer or like beer and wine or?
So I, I don't think that's stipulated under the application, but we'd be looking at just beer, just low, like under 6.5% ABV beers and potentially ciders. But, but nothing, it, it, our customers are not after anything more.
It's not really a wine kind of crowd.
Yeah, it's, it's not what they're looking for.
We're not looking to open a bar. We're looking to serve basic alcoholic drinks, but not high alcohol.
Yeah.
I mean, personally, I'm looking at three different types of beers and that, that's it. And maybe a cider, so that. But I don't believe there's any stipulation about that in the licence.
Yeah, no, I was just curious, that's all.
Yeah, that's fine. That's absolutely fine.
In terms of restocking, because it's, it looks relatively small on the plan application. So would there be restocking before and after match or?
Yeah, so we will restock the burger van with food and drink and anything else that might be relevant during the times where we're not serving. So, but it's a tall fridge, it's a floor-to-ceiling fridge. So it has, has quite a lot of capacity for alcohol in that sense. Sufficient that we're not gonna need to be messing around in the middle.
I mean, there never are great plans when, because you can't sort of see it.
Yeah, it's not a 3D plan. I appreciate that. Yeah.
We should do that, yeah. No, it's really helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you for that. Right, before I give everyone just to sum up their presentations, I am going to give an opportunity for any of the representatives to ask any questions. And then all your questions, please, no comments, all in a long remarks, if you've got any specific questions of the applicant.
Thank you. So the first question that I'd like to ask is, where, if you, you say in your proposed conditions, condition eight, that customers shall be asked to take purchases away from the vicinity, which is contrary to what you just said about people looking after people in the umbrella of your vicinity. So where exactly do you expect people to take open cups of alcohol from your van? Do I ask all the questions together or?
That's a great question. We, so if we're serving, say, you know, a handful of people, then they will usually take their burgers and, or hot dogs or whatever. And they'll go and meet a friend around the corner or they'll usually within 100 yards of the entrance, the gateway that they're going to. So there's sort of a, there is a wider remit because obviously it's not an on-licence and we're not a, a pub. But it's that, it's the issue I was referring to earlier where there's the, people will get a burger or they'll go, and then they'll walk around the ground to a pub and then they'll get a pint glass and then they'll walk back to us. And then they'll meet the friends and they'll be the glass and the burger or they'll go to the shop or, you know, whatever. And we, yeah, so people will, people will congregate in the vicinity. And it's really hard to put a definition on that because we're not an on-licence. But we are hoping to draw more people to stay within the vicinity of their entrances rather than to travel around the ground.
Thank you. Also, my next question on that is the waste management. We, we experience, and I'm, I'm well aware of a lot of the local community, even as far as the end of Edmund Road, experiencing a lot of problems with litter, particularly from the burger vans. And it's not just you, there's multiple burger vans around Sheffield United Stadium on match days. So I'd like some clarification, where exactly and how far your litter picking and waste management procedures will, will be operable.
So currently, we go halfway down John Street to where the bollards, you know where the bollards are that you can't drive through. So we'll go that far because that's the end of our road doors. And then we'll kind of do around the roundabout within 50 to 100 yards of each of the roads around the roundabout. Because again, that's kind of where we expect our customer base to go and we'll go around with black bags. Yeah, and so if we find that that is not sufficient, then we'll go further.
Okay, sorry, all these questions. My next question relates to my earlier point about the lack of toilets and public facilities. Obviously, when people are drinking alcohol in the street, there is gonna be a need for toilets. Where they're in a bar, it's contained, there's toilet facilities, there's a door in and out with a doorman on it. And I'm just wondering where you expect people to relieve themselves after having consumed two pints of beer from your van?
That's an excellent question. We, again, find that a lot of the, a lot of our fans will come half an hour to an hour before. That's most of our customer base coming that time and they'll have their drink and then they'll go into the ground. And so we generally would not expect somebody to be coming needing to relieve themselves. There are toilets available in the shop around the, near the petrol station, which I believe a lot of local people use. And there are shops in the, there are toilet facilities in the bars should people go there and the shops. But we anticipate that our customer base are going to the Sheffield United ground and so that they will go into the Sheffield United ground to watch the football ground game or they'll go home afterwards, should they need to.
Often, they use the car park, unfortunately, next to my house, particularly if you're serving after the football match. You would not have any, any other way of relieving themselves if you're serving for an hour after the match. My last question is around the door staff that you're going to employ. And I just wonder if you could elaborate for me, how exactly with no doors and a, a policy to allow... How exactly with no doors and a policy to allow people to wander the local streets with open cups of alcohol, how are door staff going to make any difference whatsoever when there isn't a door for them to manage?
So we would consider that, door staff is a term that is used, but we would consider them to be security. And so they would be standing near the hatch, near where the customers are served, or near the door to the burger van. And ensuring that anybody who is purchasing food from us or attempting to purchase food from us and drink, it would be done so in a safe manner, and they would be watching the streets around. They would probably be positioned outside of the vehicle so that they can get a gauge for what's going on around the van.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions for anyone else?
Yeah, the compostable plastic cups you said that you would possibly use, how long do they take to decompose?
I have not looked into that until today. So I will, I'll look into that. But I imagine paper cups will by the grade within a week or so. But I, I don't know, I'd just be really interested to look into it. It's a really interesting point that you raise, and I'd be really interested in that.
So in essence.
I think, sorry.
Me and my fellow litter pickers will be picking up those things.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to do is be responsible ecologically, not expect rubbish to decompose on the streets. And our aim is not to allow or to permit or to encourage littering, and never has been. But it's a good question.
And our litter pickers will be trained to spot our packaging and other packaging, and they'll pick it up as they already do with other people's litter at the moment.
I appreciate that you're having your litter pickers go out. But unfortunately, a lot of your wrappers and soon-to-be cups will end up on our street or where we pick. So it doesn't soothe me very much.
We will try, we do try and we will continue to try our hardest to remove all of the litter that comes from us 100% and other litter around as well because we care about litter. I don't like it, and I don't like it in my street, and I wouldn't like it in somebody else's street. So all we can commit to do is trying our very hardest to remove the litter that is ours.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of the questions. Finally, again, interested parties, if there's anything else you wish to add or to sum up, you don't have to, but if you want to say anything else before we finally finish, now's the opportunity to say so, just to sum up.
Thank you. Obviously, I've made a lot of points that I think are really important to not just myself, but for the local community in general. I'm also, would like to reiterate my point that I made about the precedent being set for all of the burger vans potentially to now apply for licences, which could open the doors to a lot more street drinking. And whether or not they would be subject to the same conditions, I don't know. The, the match days are quite horrendous for the local community already. And I think that anything that encourages people to drink in the street rather than forces people to do less of that cannot be good for the local community. When people purchase alcohol from the shop, they are taking it away, but they may not necessarily be drinking it in the street, they could be sitting elsewhere, they could be taking it home. So I don't see it as the same thing. This is alcohol being served in open cups, basically forcing people to drink in our local streets. Whereas people inside the pubs, it's contained. And I do take the point about inebriation and people coming out of the pubs inebriated. But they tend to be all heading into town and/or into the, away from the area or into the football ground. And I have to say that personally, and I live literally 100 metres from the burger van, I don't see a lot of people congregating and drinking in the street. It does happen, but I don't see big crowds of it. And so this concerns me because people will be congregating to drink. And it brings it more into our community than it already is. It's already a problem, and I can't see that this could make it better in any way, shape or form. Thank you for listening. I don't know if you want to say anything.
Yeah, I do appreciate that you do litter picking, but unfortunately, people go beyond where you litter pick and ends up in my street and at the end of the street. And I don't think it's actually reasonable to think that you might go there. But we end up doing, doing your job in a sense by picking up the litter, so it does affect us.
Okay, thank you. If something else, send over to yourselves, then applicants, if you wanted to sum up your application in it, or anything else on your wish to add on.
Thank you, and thanks for all the comments. Really appreciate all dialogue, it's really good. And we, we believe that the licence application that we're putting forward meets the requirements of the Licensing Act. We've worked very closely with the relevant authorities to ensure that it does so. We believe that all the best safety measures have been followed. And we believe that because of the nature of where our van is positioned and our customer base, it will reduce the overall levels of antisocial behaviour with the drinks limit and the ABV limit. And it will reduce the overall damage done to the local community and the risk to people. We want to take that very seriously. And we believe that this will, is a move, is a step in the right direction. And we've taken all the precautions and conditions that we believe are necessary to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone. We just needed to ask these licence officers now the options we've got available for us this morning.
Thank you, Chair. The options open to the committee are, one, to grant the premises licence in the terms requested, two, to grant the premises licence with conditions, or three, to reject the whole or part of the application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we move into a private session to have a discussion and deliberate, come to, hopefully come to a decision. If you wanna wait outside, welcome to do so, and we can call you back and let you know what the decision is. What we're gonna ask yourselves, and the licence officer to leave the meeting. Thank you. Okay, thank you again for attending this morning. We have deliberated and we've taken obviously everything into account what we'd heard, we've heard this morning from yourselves and from the interested parties. And we've come to a decision, and we have decided, we have agreed that it would actually undermine all four licence objectives, and therefore we have decided to reject the application. You will obviously get a more detailed explanation of our reasoning in writing from our, from the council. Anything else, Sam?
No, just to round it off, everybody who's made representations, both who've attended and in writing, will get a notice from the licensing service following the hearing. It'd be a summary of everything that was discussed, how members came to the decision, and just confirming that decision. So you actually do have the right of appeal against that as well. So within 21 days of the date on the notice to the magistrate's court, should you wish to do so, they'll basically just say exactly as members have done today, look at everything as it stands at that point in time, and come to a decision as to whether members were wrong in rejecting the application. But really appreciate you guys coming down today. Just sorry that that's, that's a decision. It's much appreciated, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, thanks for your time and everything, really appreciate it. Have a nice day. Oh, sorry.
Thank you for being such responsible business owners, you know. Genuinely, we all felt that way about you. It was, yeah, I'm sorry about the decision, but equally, thank you. And please continue to be such a valuable part of that community and, you know, that environment, thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, shall we, can we leave now? Right, thank you, have a nice day.